We good to go then? You all set? Everybody set? All right, let's start this selectmen meeting on Friday, May 7, 2021, at 4:41. Do you all rise and join in? Please, allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming, especially those on Zoom. We're here just to finalize the warrant articles for town meeting. We had a brief discussion on Sunday afternoon with town council, and they had made some suggestions to Mike and I at the time that they thought would be relevant and necessary. And so that's why we're here, just to go over those changes. And so we're all on the same page. And there are some other changes I think might be needed to be made as well. So maybe we'll open up to town council to explain exactly what they saw and what they're recommending. So either Bill or Laura. Awesome.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. So did you want me to just kind of explain?
Yeah, if you could give the rest of the board a brief overview of what we discussed and the recommendations that you're proposing, that would, I think, be a good start.
So there's just four of us all now, and the other four members present? Oh, they're the present persons.
We have to speak louder.
So we should have to do local.
So certainly, I'd be happy to explain. We took a look at the proposed bylaw for the town administrator position. And at the warrant articles.
We can't hear great.
Lauren, can you hang on just one moment? They're having trouble hearing you. I'm trying to fix it right now. Okay.
It could be just Comcast. You know.
No, just our luck.
Well, no, I just tried to do something on my computer.
Are you going to do it yet?
Well, I just got spinning and spinning, yeah, when I tried to use the internet here. It's Friday afternoon.
So everybody's?
Can we move that setup like closer to us so we can hear her better? Like the speakers she's on?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Her laptop seems to be, I don't know what's going on there. Looks like it's having a fit.
It's updating.
All that thing blinking up there?
No, I can see her screen, it's just.
Well, she's got this right there, fine. All that. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, can we get the volume up on that? At least we can.
Um, I can, let me think. I'm just gonna run out of battery.
Oh.
Yeah.
If I was at school, I would have a lot of extension cords for you. I travel with about three giant extension cords.
Okay.
So if Jason wants to move, he can.
Do you want?
No.
Do you care?
Let's try this.
Is that okay?
Hey Lauren, go ahead and see what we get now.
Okay, thank you.
I just lost it.
Everything just went dead.
Oh, my God. Okay.
It's all right.
Well, you're prepared.
I know she's.
I got like 800.
You got it?
She doesn't have a long enough.
You don't think this is gonna be a lot of them?
There's an outline under there. Yeah, there's an outline under this table. See that?
Yep.
That's there. And if we take Jason's table away from him, you could slide his table back, like I said before. Just saying.
The point was to move that forward so you could hear it.
Well, yeah, there was that idea too, until the extension cord wasn't long enough. Then we went to Plan B.
You know, this is an omen.
No, it's fine. This is what we've lived with this whole year. This is our pandemic internet year. How our classes were. Kids are there one minute, go on the next.
You know that, right?
It was just.
I've already heard the speech.
As long as you can hear me.
All right. Do we have everybody back? Oh, hey, look at this. Zoom quit unexpectedly.
Can't hear you, Catherine.
Not at all? Oh, here we are. Yeah, my screen says Zoom quit unexpectedly.
Just letting you know.
All right. So what I was talking about is basically the hierarchy of laws. And I was explaining that a special act has the same weight, even more so than the general laws when it comes to the form of town governance. So you have an existing special act which sets forth the powers and duties of a position that's entitled Finance Director. And in order to create a town administrator position that has any of those authorities, we need to do two things. So one is to rescind the act, which you have already been thinking about. And the other is to get special legislation that allows some of that authority to be given to the town administrator position. Now, under state law, 4123A, a town administrator acts by and through the Board of Selectment, has no independent authority. Town meeting can adopt a bylaw, and I can give you some examples. But in each case, and I actually went through this with a town a while ago, in each case where the specific authority in state law is the boards, we have to add into the bylaw something like as allowed by the board, as permitted by the board, as authorized by the board. Because the board doesn't have to cede any of its authority to a town administrator appointed under 4123A. That statute was typically used for executive secretaries, town administrators who, you know, didn't have very much authority. The new type of town administrator, and it sounds like the town administrator that you like, that you're thinking about, is a town administrator who has some of the sovereign authority of the town actually ceded to that person. And in order to have that be possible, it has to be done as well through a special act. So there's a number of things that jumped out at me on the proposed bylaw that if you wanted to give to the town administrator, you'd have to ask for by special act. So my thought process was you have two warrant articles that are addressing the repeal of the special act and the creation of a town administrator position. Because of the things that the town is trying to do with that town administrator position, as I learned from reading the government study, committee's report and bylaw, that really needs special legislation too. So my thinking was, you can still do what you want to do, it's just in a little bit of a different way. But within the scope of Articles 4 and 5, certainly together, in my opinion, although the moderator gets to decide. But so what I did was I took the, and I'm sorry it did take me a few days to get to, I took the bylaw committee's bylaw and I converted it to a special act. Some of the things that I think you can do by bylaw, I took out because they don't need to be in the special act. But the things that you wanted to have in there, or that the bylaw committee, I'm sorry, the government study committee wanted, I left in most of those things. You could still adopt a bylaw in the future to identify additional responsibilities of the town administrator. And there's language in the document, which I entitled The Town Administrator Act, which allows for the town by vote by by law, by vote at town meeting or vote of the Board of Selectmen to expand those authorities. So that brought us to today and a discussion with you all about, you know, this process and where we would go from here.
Awesome. So basically, you've created this special article for us, saving us the time and effort, incorporating what Joe's group has done and all their work as well. So now, do we need to vote on this special act?
Well, could I just raise one other, on one other question?
Sure.
Thank you. What I wasn't clear on from reading the work that the government study committee had done was who has appointing authority in the town. And I would want to add that it seems like about halfway through that the town administrator does have some appointing authority, but it's not specified which positions or, you know, whether it's the, whether all department heads, whether department heads and staff, whether just staff. So I just wanted to make sure that we clarify that before you presented this to, you know, to, you know, for approval.
I'll have to reach out to Joe to make that language a little clearer. Anybody have any comments, questions? Jason?
The last statement that she made was in reference to Section 7.
Oh, can I look at that? Thank you. Yeah. Oh, there you go.
Is that correct, Lori?
Yeah, it's so subject to the approval of the Select Board. That's fine. Right? I thought our intention was not to give just unlimited power.
I agree.
Okay.
But that's what she was referring to, is Section 7?
Right, so.
Lauren, was it Section 7?
I sent you the wrong version, so I need to get the right version and send that. I'm so sorry. Because when I open that, it looks like it is your actual proposed bylaw. So let me just double check.
I kind of like it. Maybe that's why we like it.
Oh, thank goodness, okay. Mr. Chair, would you like me to run through it to explain what each section does?
I think that would be helpful at this point.
Am I allowed to share my screen?
Yes.
I think that would be also very helpful at this point.
Okay, great. All right. So, okay. So I have to go back over here. I have to share, am I allowed? You have to allow me, please. Usually you can just hover over me and right-click and some options might come up?
You let her take over the screen. We allow, what does that say? Allowed to.
Oh, you know what? In participants?
Yeah.
Maybe?
You have to allow her to take over, is what happens. In Zoom, it's a different word. Make her the co, make her the host, make her the host.
It makes me co-host. Make me the co-host, and then I can share.
Yeah, she just can't.
Try that, see if that works.
There we go. Oops, okay. Okay, so here we are. Can you guys see my, an act creating the office of Town Administrator?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So the first thing is, I say what it's gonna be called, Town Administrator Act. Seems like a silly thing, but people argue about those. The next section is to address the Select Board. The Select Board is the chief executive, chief policymaker, and has the powers and duties of a Boards of Selectmen. I will say, I use the word Select Board instead of Board of Selectmen. You can certainly put it back, but the General Court has been pretty intent on having towns, when they have anything done with respect to governance, changing from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. So that's up to you. I can make that change in a Jiffy. So the next section is about town administrator appointment. There's gonna be a town administrator appointed by the Select Board by a vote of four out of five. I added this, or if one seat is vacant, by a vote of three out of four, only because that's happened to us before. And it says four out of five, and there aren't, you know, they can't get a unanimous vote. That's up to you guys as well. Town Administrator is the chief administrative officer responsible for day-to-day. I was hoping to get a little clarity on this oversight comment. Appointed on the basis of education, et cetera, posting a bond. The town administrator will be evaluated annually. And the town administrator shall be paid no more than the amount appropriated by town meeting for such purposes. That is also a policy decision. There's actually a statute that allows a Select Board to agree to pay a salary, even if town meeting hasn't appropriated the money. And then that's essentially a court case to have the town pay. But so I put that in there to avoid that. Okay, general powers and duties. And I really liked how the government study committee had come up with the bylaw in terms of the different purposes. So I tried to carry that through here. Assist the Select Board in carrying out its policy directives. Town Administrator at all times shall act in the best interest of the town and without bias or favoritism. Town Administrator shall devote the full working time, which is, and shall not simultaneously run for, be a candidate for, or hold elective office during the term of their appointment. The town administrator shall not engage in any other business except with written consent. And then we come here, general operational authority. And these are most of the items that you guys had in the first part. So it's attend all meetings, facilitate activities of multiple member boards, coordinate legal matters, prosecute defendants, settle and when necessary, employ special counsel. Town Administrator may, with approval of the Select Board, reorganize, creation of any new full-time compensated position. I thought what you guys meant was within an existing approved budget. So if you reorganize after there was a budget set, that that would also require four out of five members of the Select Board. The Select Board itself, because its budget is, the town administrator gives you the budget, the town administrat, I mean, the, you could approve that new position when you are voting on the budget. And then other duties, as may be required by state and local law and regulation, vote of town meeting or the Select Board. So that allows for a bylaw, which would be allowed anyway, but specifically says so, and allows things to be further clarified by bylaw. Then the town administrator will serve as the Chief Financial Officer. Responsibility to provide for administration expenditure of all monies and the amounts and for the purposes for which the funds were appropriated by town meeting and in a manner otherwise consistent with law. Town Administrator will also serve as the Chief Procurement Officer with responsibility for procuring and executing contracts for town supplies and services, except for the School Department, Police Department and Fire Department. And annually, the town administrator in the finance role will prepare and present to the Select Board all operating budgets other than the School Department budget, as well as capital budgets and the five-year capital improvement and financial plan. The next section had to do with administration and personnel administration. And I was glad that you guys addressed this directly. This is something that can cause interpretive problems in many cases. The town administrator will serve as the Personnel Officer, be responsible for administering the personnel system. The administrator shall propose, probably adopt and amend personnel rules and regulations following conferral with the Select Board, relating to all town positions other than those that are under collective bargaining agreements or under the jurisdiction of the School, Police, Fire and Light Departments. This says that the administrator will conduct annual evaluations of department heads, will consult with the chairs of boards where the department heads answer to an elected or appointed board, except the Chief of Police, Fire Department, manager of the Light Department. The town administrator has authority to make inquiries. It says, any matters affecting town administration, and I wanted to get a little more clarity on that. The Select Board has authority to investigate anything, any town office or activity under the general laws. So this is what I thought. This was kind of mimicking that to make sure that the town administrator has the ability to get the documents that they needed.
Can you pause for one minute, please?
Yes, of course.
That's Kathleen Kestrelles. I'm wondering, I understand why we're excluding the Light Department, but I do not understand why we'd be excluding Police and Fire Department because we typically, our Finance Director does procure their items. They're part of our town budget that gets voted town meeting.
That was personnel, not?
Nope, procurement.
Mr. Chair, if I could respond? Is that okay?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so I didn't, most of these things, I had no personal input as, or Bill didn't, as Town Council. This is just what the committee decided. So where this is a special act, the Board, when it's voting on what to present and town meeting, when it's voting on what to present to the General Court, has the ability to make those decisions, and that's a policy decision.
Oh, okay, so we can change it.
Okay.
That's fine, thank you.
That works for us.
Okay, you're welcome. Dismissal for cause members of multiple member bodies that the town administrator appoints. And that was my question, who, who is gonna be the appointing authority? Also, if you look in the first line of Section 7, it says, the town administrator shall, subject to the approval of the Select Board, within the limitations outlined by state statutes, appoint employees, departments or supervisors. I wasn't quite sure what's meant by this because in, under the state law, the Select Board is responsible for everything on the town side. The School Committee is responsible for everything on the school side. And there are, every department, basically, has some authority to make appointments. So the Planning Board can appoint the planner and the Conservation Commission can appoint the agent and the Board of Health can appoint the health agent and the Town Clerk can appoint the Assistant Town Clerk, on and on. So I didn't know whether the words within the limitations outlined by state statutes should even be there. So that was the question I was raising there. Town Administrator removal or resignation, this is something that's different than what the government study committee did. They included languages that fit in a number of special acts that sets out a whole process for removal. The downside of having that in the charter is that if any portion of it isn't complied with by accident, it's very complicated. Then there's an avenue to challenge the decision. You know, I put in there the four out of five or three out of four if one seat is vacant. And again, that's a policy decision. Following written notice and an opportunity for a hearing. So notice and a hearing is due process. And so the town administrator could choose to ask for a hearing or not. And then this line is from what they had come up with. The Select Board shall be authorized to place the town administrator on paid administrative leave for no more than 45 days while the removal process is ongoing and may send that notice by regular or electronic mail. So the entire process is supposed to last no, for the removal, the hearing will last no more than 45 days. And then if the town administrator wanted to resign, they would provide at least 45 days' notice as well, but the Board could waive that. And I said, any additional processes concerning removal or suspension shall be addressed by the parties in an employment contract. And that is what we've been seeing as the best way to go about, to go about that. So that's kind of the recent state of things. Then Section 9 is about an acting town administrator. And the appointment shall be for a period not to exceed 90 days and may be renewed no more than one time, is what the government study committee said. I put two times in there for you all to think about because in our experience, it can get very, it can get very difficult to have a search committee and find someone that people think is, you know, appropriate for a permanent position. I certainly understand if you want to do it just one more time, 180 days seems like it should cover it. But I at least wanted to mention that to you so that you understood that. And then the provisions of Chapter 60 are hereby repealed. Any powers and duties of the Finance Director created by the act that we didn't address, as well as any property or obligations held by the office, transfer by operation of law to the town administrator. We have two choices on how it should be ended. One is to say it shall take effect upon passage. The other is to say that it will be presented to the voters at a meeting, I mean, at an election. And so I have both of those alternatives here. The other thing that I did differently than, that I did somewhat differently, and then I have to run for one minute, than the government study committee is that I took out references to the particular manual and particular personnel bylaw. It's in a document that's supposed to be relatively permanent. It's just really better not to have that in there. Those things can be, there's a process for approving it and for changing it. And so they would be updated or changed in accordance with that process, which does require conferral with the Select Board, so an open meeting. That's the end of my explanations. And Mr. Chair, I have to run for a couple minutes. Bill's gonna join you in this conversation for right now, and then I will come back. I had already agreed to do a meeting at 5:00, and I'm already late.
No problem. Thank you very much for your time and efforts. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thank you. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna send this right now to Bill, and he can share it with everybody.
Awesome.
And I don't mean on your screen, Bill. I mean, you can send along. Okay, thanks again, I'll be back.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Jason?
No, not right now.
Kathy? Kathy?
Well, am I assuming this is going on as a warrant article? Is that what we're talking about, a warrant article?
Special, yeah.
I mean, that's what we did with the financial director thing. So it's a warrant article.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I might, Kathy, the idea was that this would, that we would take article, or the suggestion is that we take, or the recommendation, we take articles four and five together because when you read them together, you come up with the special act, a petition to the legislature and doing away with the finance director and the finance department. So when you read them together, you come up with exactly what this special act does. And the recommendation and the suggestion is that at town meeting, articles four and five be taken together and this be presented, however the select board might want to change it or modify it or approve it, that this be presented to town meeting as a special act that will do all of the things that the citizens committee wanted to do and recommended.
So for clarification purposes, were, are we reposting our warrant?
No, you don't need to. Articles four and five, as posted, are, in my opinion, are adequate, and this special act may be presented under the authority and the notice of those two articles.
Okay.
Now, I will tell you that the moderator has to advise, if asked, whether this is within the scope of the articles. If the moderator asks me, my opinion would be that it is.
Okay.
I'll clarify, repeat that last statement. I didn't quite get it. By the moderator.
The moderator, if the moderator were asked whether presentation of a special act is within the scope of articles four and five, my opinion, and if the moderator were to ask me, town council, is that, in your opinion, is that within the scope of those articles? My opinion would be, yes, it is. The town meeting could vote on this special act under warrant articles four and five as currently written. So in my opinion, you don't need to repost or to have a special town meeting or anything for this. In my opinion, this special act, as Lauren has prepared it, is within the scope of articles four and five and may be offered to town meeting for the vote. That's my opinion. If someone asks the moderator whether it's within the scope, the moderator would have to reply.
Kathy, you all?
Yeah, no, I'm set on that. That's so, so that's good. I think that's good, and I feel that the moderator would probably defer to the town attorney.
And we don't have to repost, which is a nice thing. Ed, any further questions?
Um, yes. Bringing your attention, Bill, to section seven?
Section seven. Yes, town administrator appointments, discipline, and grievances.
Right. Last sentence. "The town administrator shall serve as a level three grievance hearing officer." Explain a level three grievance officer.
Um, I'll have to defer to Lauren when she comes back.
Okay. All right, I'll have a follow-up question after, after that explanation of that.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, will this, is it, would this be presented as a, as an amendment to the articles three and four?
No. This is, this is the, there would be a motion under articles three and four. We usually just vote the articles written. You can have a separate motion under an article. And the motion should be that, under articles three and four, move that town meeting-
Four and five, four and five.
... the proposed special act, and the special act should be printed and distributed along with the warrants and be available on the tables when people go in to pick up so they've got a copy of it. And then I suppose it's, you know, it would be read unless somebody waves, moves to waive the reading.
Is the, this special article, is that amendable on town meeting floor?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, okay.
And it'd be articles four and five, Bill, right? Not three and four?
Yes, yes, it's, it's, the article would be taken together.
Referring to the, to this special article that was drawn up, this could be amended different sections on the town meeting floor?
The special act, yes, it could. Yes, it could.
And that, simple majority?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll have a further comment after we get the explanation on the grievance officer.
Dan?
Yes, counselor, what's your opinion based on it? That it's, is it not a material change, or what is the basis of law for allowing this to be added in substitution for the existing law? What's the basis?
The two articles, when you read together, Mr. McDonald, let me find the warrant. Here it is here, articles four and five. What they contemplate, article four, to see if the town will vote to petition the general court to appeal chapter 60 of the acts and resolves of 1998. All right, so that's what part of this special act does. The final section would repeal the special, chapter 60 of the special acts in 1998. All right, so, so what you've got in the, in article four is accomplished by a portion of the special act. Article five says, "To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of the general laws, chapter 41, section 23A, authorizing the board to hire a town administrator and assign the town administrator such duties as they see fit." That places, in my opinion, the residents of Groveland on notice and on warning that town meeting is going to consider establishing a town administrator form of government. And within the scope of that warning and that notice, my opinion is that it is possible and allowable for an article to be, for a special act which would establish a town administrator form of government to be offered within the scope of article five. So you've got two parts here. You've got the first part, article four, we're repealing acts of 1998, chapter 60, and under article five, town meeting is warned and advised that the town meeting will consider establishing a town administrator form of government. Now, the fact that it's not under 23A doesn't bother me. I think the residents of the town are an ample and sufficient warning and notice that a town administrator form of government will be considered, and this act, the special act proposed, does just that, does just that. So that is the basis for my opinion that, under articles four and five, the special act may be offered to town meeting vote.
So is it your opinion that there's sufficient time submitting this at this point Friday before the town meeting, that sufficient notice to the people of the town of Groveland in the midst of the pandemic? That's your opinion?
Yes, it is.
Do you think it's fair?
Yes, I do.
Have there been any other notices to the people?
Whenever the warrant was posted, three or four weeks ago, was sufficient warning that town meeting will discuss changing to a town administrator form of government and repealing the finance director form of government we have. So in my opinion, Mr. McDonald, that's sufficient warning. The mechanics for doing that, if, you know, if citizens in Groveland are interested in participating and want to say in whether finance, the finance director form of government should be repealed, and whether a town administrator form of government should be established, they have warning, and they should show up, and they will.
But, but that warning was given in advance. However, the details and the mechanics of that are just before us now. Is that correct?
No.
That is correct, but you could have a warrant that establishes, you know, a adoption of mass general law 41, section 23A. You can have that amended on town meeting floor to say, instead of that, I move that we establish, we move a special act. That could be done on town meeting floor, and in my opinion, it would be permissible because the residents of the town have had notice that that's going to be discussed.
Okay. I, for the record, would like to disagree with your opinion in that it's impractical, impracticable, and something of this scope and magnitude to submit lengthy details about how it will function without opportunity for public hearing outside of the town meeting, the town annual meeting, open on Monday, and without the foresight and without information on deliberation. So, you know, or next week.
No, two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks from Monday.
So are there going to be any hearings in advance of that? I mean, how do you go back and forth on it if there's any issues? I mean, you know, I've been to several town meetings and, you know, people that are for it, 51 show up and they rule the day. So is that representative of the 5,000 voters within the town of Groveland? I argue the contrary. So for the record, I disagree with you. I think this should go on a ballot at some point down the road, and it shouldn't be heard at town meeting.
I think, Mr. McDonald, I certainly understand your concerns. I know that there are, that there is that thought out there. I believe that this is going to get posted well before the 24th, which is the date of the town meeting. So there certainly will be the opportunity for residents in the town, should they choose to do so and should they want to, to read through this and inform themselves beforehand. Whether that's enough time or not is, you know, is a matter of opinion, but my opinion is, in any event, as I stated, that I think it's within the scope of the two articles, and folks need to show up if they want to participate in the decision about what form of government the town takes, and the future, the future direction that the town wants to go.
One more question, and what is the level of urgency on this issue?
That, I can't answer that. I think that's probably for the members of the board.
I mean, is time up for the essence?
Can I have the floor for a second?
Yeah, are you?
I think he's-
That's it, that's it. I made my point.
So Selectman McDonald, welcome and all, and nice to see you again. It's been a while. But, so this has been a study that has been broadcast on television, posted on the town website, ongoing for about a year. It started before the pandemic. First, the Board of Selectmen worked on it for like nine months, and then we determined that we wanted to get a broader involvement in this process. So we had volunteers from the town step forward over a year ago, and yes, the pandemic happened during all this. But despite all that, this group has met, televised its meetings, read their minutes out loud during their meetings. And I believe, Catherine, don't we also have a study from this government study committee that kind of says a lot of this, posted on our town website at this point, and it has been posted, I think, for several weeks? So every attempt possible has been made to get information about a change in government out to the people of Groveland for more than a year. It's been a couple of years. And you and I both know, back when we were on the first study committee, we first looked at the Board of Selectmen and changing town government at the same time, and the majority vote was to just change the Board of Selectmen at that time. So this is the next step in the process, and the charge of this committee was to simply decide what would be the best way to bring this forward. Not to decide whether the town meeting should say yes or no, but to decide how should this look, what would fit best in the town of Groveland, how should this position be structured, how much authority should this position have, and contained herein are, are the different elements of it. Now, you weren't here when Lauren spoke. She said, "We have the ability to edit this as far as to make it fit our particular form of government," because, as you know, you go from one town to another, and based on how the town is set up, some committees have more authority than other committees. It's just the way the bylaws and the committees have been created. So we'd have to go through this and tailor it a little bit, I think, to Groveland, but it contains the essence of what the government study committee arrived at, and I think we just need to make the edits. I think in looking at this and looking at the warrant articles, this is actually going to be more useful to the town meeting because it actually explains it better. You know, it explains how this position will fit. But I do think we still have places in here that we need to look at and examine because we want to make sure that we present something that would fit, so that if it does pass, we want to make sure it fits our town. So right now, it's not a matter of will this be voted on a town meeting, because the town meeting is going to vote on this form of government one way or the other. It's on the warrant. It's our, this, I think, provides more description and like frames it. So when Lauren comes back, I guess she had told us that we could look at different sections of it and make sure that it aligns with our, our bylaws, you know, how we're set up. Like, for example, our Board of Health, I believe, has appointing authority, right? I believe I'm correct. But our police department, they do the interviewing, but we have to do the appointing.
I'm not hearing anyone anymore.
I'm sorry. I'll pause.
I think we lost the volume.
It's Internet Day. Yeah.
But anyways-
So that's all. I wanted to just put a framework on it.
This has been a big secret. It's been talked about-
Can I respond to what she said?
Well, I just want to add to what she said, that this has not been a big secret. It's been discussed at normal Selectman meetings.
I'm not saying it's a big secret. What I'm saying is that, based upon the elections that just happened, the participation level is at an absolute, a historical low. I'm anticipating that the town meeting will be also low. So my concern is, with such a major change to our form of government here, that we're going to hit it at the absolute low in history for voter participation. So I think it ought to be tabled for another time. So I'm not saying you're trying to bushwhack people, but I just, right now, the timing is awful. So timing, timing matters in life. It shouldn't slip in with low voter turnout. It's not, it's not, it wouldn't be a bad thing to put it off for a special town meeting in the fall or something like that. Hopefully, the vaccines will go out. People will come back to normal in their life, and we'll have more participation in this town. So I think, you know, my opinion is that we owe that to the people of Groveland and the voters that are anxious and reluctant to come out. So I'm listening to the counselor that, you know, therefore warned. Well, I'm not sure I like that attitude, you know, it's, you show up or else. I want to cooperate with the people and respect the fact that if they don't feel comfortable coming out, we can do, we can take care of something to the magnitude of this article. We can take it up at a later date, and it's not fatal. It's not kicking the can down the road two, three years. It couldn't be addressed at a later time.
I think, just a quick one though.
I think your comments are duly noted, and I, I think a lot of it is speculation on your part. I don't think you can, you can accurately determine, standing here today, how many people will show up at the town meeting.
No, I can't. No, I can't.
So it's speculation. I think we've gone too far to turn back this-
Very quick point is that at the election last fall, there was a, astonishingly large voter turnout. You'd have to ask the clerk the amount, but I think there was a low voter turnout because it was, it basically an uncontested election, local election. I don't think it's, I don't think you can blame COVID because if you compare the two elections, the fall election and the election that we just had were vastly different.
Right. We can continue to make excuses till the sun comes up and down again, but it's not going to change too much. Kathy?
Well, yeah, I just was going to add that, you know, each week, I mean, working in a public school, I've seen, I've seen the difference already in participation. We have all the students back in, you know, the sports teams are kicking up. Each week changes. But I also will add, Dan, I, I thought about the same thoughts that you just said several months ago, as this committee that's been working so hard was coming to their conclusion, their end. And it's just, it's similar to what Ruth is saying. I don't know that we can say with surety right now that by the time we hit the town meeting, people won't want to show up or won't show up that wanted to. I think we have to go forward and listen to the town meeting. And last year's town meeting was vocal on the issue of not voting on certain items on the warrant because they felt that there were not enough people in the room. And town meeting did table, I believe, two articles last annual town meeting. So it is the freest form of government and voting, the open town meeting. Everybody has a voice. So certainly, I'm sure that people will look around, and if it looks like there's not a lot of people there, I'm very sure that someone's going to bring that up, just as you are now. But I feel like we've gotten this far. Let's, let's hear from town meeting. Let's see what goes on, and let's listen to them. Let them tell us what they think.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Yes.
Again, and I was very vocal about this, that it, same thing that my colleague did, Dan, I concur with him about the participation. There were still people with this virus that are still afraid to come out of their house. And you, you may not get a great participation. I want to see as many people as possible to weigh in on this. And originally, when this committee was formed, if you remember, I had asked if anybody that was opposed to the article was going to be on the committee. Those are the people I want to hear from, is if they were, but they did not participate in the committee. It was only people that were in favor of it. I want to hear what the answers were, or questions that people had that were against it, so that you're prepared when you go into the town meeting. But that, that didn't happen. And then it was also brought out at the meeting that the leader of the group wanted to have a non-binding referendum at town election. That never happened. That was abandoned. And then I just don't think, people were not able really to go in person to these hearings or meetings that they had. I don't think enough work has been done. I think there's still some questions out there, whether, that people would like to see some answers, and I don't think that the town meeting is the place to get all of those. I think that that should have been done in hearings. If this is put off for six months, a year, a year down the road, I think you'd get better participation. The virus would be over. We don't even know what the capacity is going to be allowed by the state for, for the town meeting. Indoor capacity, I thought I heard today, read somewhere, it was 100 people. But indoor capacity for weddings and functions like that, same thing should apply for town meeting. So I agree with, with my colleague that this is something that should be put off for another year to get a better rounded vote of the people in the town of Groveland. So I, I agree. I think it should be put off for more, more discussion. And also, I asked for some costs from this group. And if you play the tape back, it's on there. What is this going to cost us for staff members? If you look at what staff members that other town administrators or town managers have, it's certainly a lot more than what we have. So we never got those figures. So I, I say it was an incomplete job by the committee because they didn't give us all the answers and they didn't do what they were told. They said they were going to have a, have a non-binding referendum. It never happened. They said they were going to get some costs. It never happened. And that was part of the charges that the Board of Selectmen gave the committee, so they didn't do those two things. Let's put this off for a year.
I don't recall this board ever charging that committee with having a non-binding referendum. referendum at any time.
The committee said that they were going to do it. They were proposing to do it.
And it was recommended that it's non-binding, it would be irrelevant. So, again, your comments are duly noted, and your opposition to this is well-established and well-documented. And we thank you for your comments. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Whether or not it's relevant, we've had other non-binding referendums. An opinion of the town would matter.
Well, to be honest with you, we already have an opinion of the town. When we did a survey, Selectman McDonald, just a couple of years back, over 62% of the respondents responded either favorably or strongly in favor of moving to a town administrator form of government. There were quite a number of respondents to those surveys. So we do have a good idea, and the committee did an incredible job reaching out to a host of people and doing an incredible amount of work to get this to where we are today. And I understand your opposition to it as well.
All right.
And again, it's duly noted. But, and, you know, 51 people at any town meeting, you've been around a long time, it happens every year. This is nothing new.
I know. I've seen it.
Again, decisions are made by people that show up. Show up at town meeting, make the decisions. If you don't show up, we can't drag you there. And it's not fair to keep kicking a can down the road just because we're going to speculate that maybe not enough people on our side will show up at this town meeting. And maybe if we push it off a year or two years, we'll get that kind of commitment. It just...
But let me ask you this. Don't you agree that the magnitude of this change, it should have been on the ballot?
No.
Why not?
Because enough study has been done already, enough surveys have been conducted, that it is apparent that the vast majority of this town wants to move toward that form of government. We are currently one of seven towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that does not have this form of government. We are to the point where we are arcane, where fossil fuel...
So at town meeting, who's going to get up and speak out against you on that one? That's what the narrative is going to be, talk at them?
Well, that's...
So that's why a private vote is important, when no one's not intimidated on the floor of town meeting to get up there and argue with the illusory majority and a committee that was put together with some of the same people that were on the GAC, the Government Advisory Committee I was chairman on years ago. Those same people expressed an opinion way back then, they wanted a town administrator or a town, and so they had preconceived notions going on to the board. I'm not certain that anyone on that board changed their position after all their deliberations. So if you populate any committee with people of like mind, you end up with a like decision. Okay? Now, I'm not saying that there weren't public hearings that people couldn't go to. Certainly, people can participate in those hearings and go there and ask questions and object. But I don't think the conclusion, okay, is necessarily anything but a biased conclusion.
And can I just put a point of order out there? Because I think that you did not hear what I said at the very beginning. The charge of this committee was not to decide yes or no. The committee was charged solely with looking around at what is existing in other towns, what kinds of town administrative positions exist. And then they met with the departments and the public in our town. They had many, many meetings, many Zooms, many interviews. And they constructed what they thought would best fit in the town of Groveland if the town of Groveland decides to vote yes. That's what's on the warrant already, already on the warrant. This provides additional explanation of it, I feel. But I also feel that we have time between now and the annual town meeting to look through this more and make the edits that we might need to make. I'm a little more concerned with the pressures of time now, that the town meeting warrant annual-wise is all set, not going to be reposted. However, just a point of order in the interest of time. If we desire to move money out of the school assessment accounts in a special town meeting prior to the annual, I believe we need to vote this today and post it by Monday to meet the requirement. And I think that if we don't vote the money out of these school assessments to get on the warrant today, to allow the public at least that opportunity, based on the analysis that I've seen of the budgets this year, we may not have enough money to offset some of the deficits that have occurred during this pandemic. So I feel like this thing, this explanation can keep going because this is warrant art, the annual town meeting warrant is not changing, is my understanding.
So we need to vote on the transfers to make them legally effective, but what about the act on the town administrator? Do we have to vote on that?
No, it's not, it's not transfers. These, the money, the most available money, the larger sums of money are attached to school assessments. And my understanding is that has to be voted at a special town meeting, and we have not posted one. We have one last chance to do that by Monday to meet the posting requirement. Is that right, Catherine? For a special town meeting, 14 days?
I was told it had to be 14 days.
Yep.
Not including the day of the posting.
Correct. So we do have, Ellen, our accountant, provided us with the excess money that's available on her spreadsheet for Essex Tech and Woodyer Tech. It's right here. So I mean, I don't quite know why Woodyer Tech is listed twice, so I think I would use just one of the $10,000s.
Yeah, I saw that. I'm not sure.
Yeah, so I would, I knew about the $45,000 in the Essex Tech, and I'm confident without, that Ellen understands what's available in the Woodyer Tech assessment. So that's, that money can't be moved by us or the Finance Board. It has to be moved at a town meeting. So we don't have an article to do that.
I understand.
Okay. So did we want to just vote this so that the warrant article can be put together?
I, that would be my hope.
Okay. So do I, do you need a motion to have a special town meeting preceding the annual town meeting?
That's a good question for the council.
Can you hear us?
I'm not sure he can hear us.
Question, please. Ms. Catherine Ellis?
Oh, the question is, we have some deficits in our budget this year, and we do have money left in the two school assessments, our Essex Tech, which is a regional school, and our Woodyer Tech Regional. We would like to be able to use that money towards the deficits. And my understanding is, a town meeting needs to vote that out of the assessments. So we needed to post a special town meeting for that purpose, prior to the annual?
Well, is it, I take it it's not in the annual?
Correct.
Correct.
Though the only other way to get around it, if it's not in the annual, is to have a special.
So does the Board of Selectmen have to make a vote first to have a special town meeting, and then we vote the article?
Yes, yes, the board. The board calls a town meeting. They call it by vote.
Okay.
Calls a special, I should say.
And so, the annual town meeting is posted for 7:00 PM? So do we have to post the special then at 6:30 PM? Not at the same time?
Yes, that's, we've done that before. That's how we've handled specials and annuals before. The special usually comes first at 6:00 or 6:30. Yes.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we post a special town meeting warrant for Monday, May 24, 2021, at 6:30 PM at the Dr. Elmer S. Bagnell School.
I'll second that.
At 6:30, 6:30?
6:30, yep. Did I say that?
Half hour is enough time.
Yes.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Terrific.
Okay. And so, do we need two separate articles, one for each assessment, or can we do it in one article?
Is that for me? Ms. Catherine Ellis?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. I look, I just looked at...
We're looking at the screen and thinking we...
I'm so sorry, yes.
I would make it two articles.
Okay. So I'll make a motion for Article One on the special town meeting warrant to transfer from the Essex Technical School budget account 100130158830058, as noted on the accountant's spreadsheet, the sum of $45,000 to firefighter call wages. That's the biggest deficit we have running, right?
I believe so.
Yes. And we can fill in the copper account line items, right?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Well, and then, we have a sum in the Woodyer Tech. And I know the Financial Department has some problems, but also she had some other deficits. The Board of Health nurse, the Council on Aging Vehicle Maintenance Expense. I guess we can just pick our, pick something. I don't want to overfund something, that's all I'm concerned about. Has anybody else looked at this?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
That I'm confused about. So we do have on the warrant Article Three that I thought was meant to address this, no?
But it doesn't have anything in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be difficult to amend that for this.
Article Three, we probably should abandon at town meeting because it doesn't really specify anything.
Okay, so it needs to be...
Yeah.
I thought it was meant to address the fact that we were transferring from one department into another department, including education. No?
Yeah. Kevin kind of left that vague on purpose, and now I don't think it's really appropriate anymore. Because we can do it through these transfers.
Mr. Chairman?
It needs a, it needs another two.
Is that a blank check of sorts, Article Three, or potentially?
That's what, it was...
I don't think it's legal.
Could it be amended to put a cap? Does anyone have any idea how much?
I was going to just table it.
Again, I think, yeah, maybe table that at town meeting just to eliminate it because it really, it was, it's poorly worded and poorly constructed.
But is there a need for that, is my question?
I don't think so.
And we don't want to abandon a need.
I don't think so. Once we do these transfers, that there's a need for that.
That covers it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think that Article Three was left blank so we could put the amounts in on the floor. And, yeah, as the motion, that's where the amounts were going to go in. These amounts here wouldn't require...
But that's a fiscal, that town, this warrant is for a different fiscal year. You just, we don't do it. We always do special town meeting before for this year, annual town meeting for next year. So it won't take much. But it looks like, on the second page of this document from Ellen, that, if I'm reading this correctly, do we have a deficit in the, where I just saw it, $10,000? In one of our insurance lines? No, no, no. I had two hundred. Where health at? Yeah, Employee Group Health Insurance.
Yes.
Is expected to have a deficit of $10,000. Do you want to put the other $10,000 there for now? And then, then the rest of these problems on the second page, we can do line items by ourselves. What do you think? Out of that whole list, I don't want to put the whole $10,000 and have some of it not be used.
Sounds good to me.
Do you think so? Yep?
Throw it up there.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for Article Number Two to transfer $10,000 out of the Woodyer Vote Tech Assessment Line Item 100130158831068.
058.
Oh, 58, thank you. Yeah. And transfer it to Employee Group Health Insurance, 10011935400054.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Okay. Okay, this, this, I'm calm now. I was worried about this.
Okay.
Yes.
So are you going to write that and get it posted? Get it to Catherine to get posted?
Yeah.
Are you and Ruth going to put that together?
We can, we can pull, like, last year's annual special town meeting warrant up and write it, but Ellen should really check it.
Make sure the figures are correctly.
Well, the line, the detail, yes. Ellen, yeah.
I think being Monday is exactly 14 days from the meeting.
It has to post on Monday, so...
It would have to be posted Monday early because it can't be posted, the same day can't count as...
Not including the day of the posting.
Yeah, not including the day of the posting.
So we can't do it? Or we can do it? Miss, ask the attorney.
Bill? Town counsel?
Yes.
So we have these two special meeting articles. When do they need to be posted? What's the latest? We understand our meeting is 6:30 now on May 24. Can they be posted by noon on May 10?
I'm looking for the, and I've got it here somewhere, the bylaw, the town's bylaw for town meetings. It tells us what that is. Hang on just a second while I find it. I think I've got it here. My recollection, it was that it said 14 days.
What do you think, Jason?
Article Two, Town Meetings.
Yeah, posted today.
Section two point, two dash, two hyphen, two dash, two one, notice. Every town meeting shall be notified by posting copies of the warrant calling the same in not less than three public places in the town 14 days at least before the day appointed for said meeting. That's what it says. 14 days in my, it doesn't say not counting the day of posting, so in my opinion, you could post it early on Monday morning and it would count.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So...
Okay, yeah, so we'll take a run at it, and then I would like, Ellen will be in on Monday, Catherine? Okay, good. I just like her, well, you know what? We can get her always posted, and if there's anything with the line numbers, she can, we can always amend it, as long as we have the notice posted. Right? Yeah.
Are we set then?
Yes, I'm good with that.
As long as you post or make changes prior to the time of the actual meeting within the 14 days.
Okay.
So if you work on it early in the morning, if you have to keep working on it.
Well, I'll work, I'll do it on the weekend. I'm at work Monday. It'll be done by, it'll be done and...
6:29.
6:29, as you...
And sent to...
Turn it to a pumpkin at 6:30.
Should I send it to you, Catherine, to have it posted by that, at the town hall? Is that what?
Yeah, if it's completed, I can get it right.
Oh, it'll be done. I'll do it on the weekend.
Sure.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't need to be a rush driver, nine a.m. at town. I mean, it's just, right?
Right. I'll be at work, so... Or actually, Ruth can help too. Are you, well, what are you doing Monday? You don't know.
Helping you.
All the stuff I was supposed to do probably today, when I was doing...
Never mind. Look, I'll, I'll type it up, send it to you to look at, then we'll send it to you, and then we'll just cross our fingers and hope for the best.
I'll follow it through.
I think it'll be all right.
So somebody want to move for adjournment?
Look, just...
Yep.
Point of clarification. As long as you post it, even if it was defective in some way, you can motion to a, at the special meeting.
Correct. No, you're right.
Just in case, yeah.
Just get it, I know.
Just in case, just get anything posted for a special meeting.
I will, I will.
Good point, good point.
Right?
Yes, I'll just...
I don't want anyone stressing out over...
No, I won't.
Over my dosia.
No, I'm going to just cut and paste from the old special town meeting one.
And room for an hour.
Yep.
You know, whatever.
Yep.
But I don't want anyone, like, ruining their day on Monday, getting this room.
Oh, no, I'll be at work.
That's all. That's all, just getting in the door.
I will, we'll get it there. It'll be fine. Then I can relax. Then I can relax more. Motion to adjourn it.
Well.
Oh.
No?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I just have a, a point of information?
Yes.
Is there going to be a government study committee meeting on Sunday? Did I understand that?
I don't know.
I was not aware of that unless it was to go over your recommendations or your suggestions.
I, the reason I'm, the reason I ask is that Lauren has asked that if there is one, that, that she be invited to explain, you know, the, the act as she wrote it. So.
I will, I will let Mr. DeMore know.
Yes, and I can send an email to Mr. DeMore as well, so.
Terrific.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Council.
Big slot. I'm too familiar with.
So before you adjourn then, the rest of modifications to the warrant, the annual warrant that is posted?
We're going to have to try and make those happen.
That's not going to happen, that's not a discussion for today? That's a discussion for?
We can discuss that as we get closer, right? I made a bullet list.
Yeah.
And since we're not reposting the warrant, we're going to have to try and work this into that annual town meeting warrant.
I think there's quite a few errors still on the warrant.
Yes.
I was working on the finance board report today and I think the grand totals on here are not accurate.
Is possible. I told you there's a mistake in the total for education, so I'm pretty sure they pulled that my, the total should be, I wrote it down, they pulled down on the edge.
Well, the subtotals don't equal the grand total. If you take the.
Right.
On all three columns.
Yes.
If you take the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 subtitled department pieces.
Yes, it's.
They do not equal the grand total.
Right, I have like for the first total, it should have been 18, 9, 6, 5, 7, 36. That's what I have, that it should have been. So we'll fix all that. It's, it happened during this part. The grade in, the gray totals, if you go back to right here, the total education total, it's like really obvious right there.
Education total is wrong and then I think.
Yeah, and then that got carried down.
I think when the trash budget got adjusted, it got adjusted in the subtotals, but not in the total total.
Probably.
Yeah.
Yep.
If the formulas are all there together, this should just low all, all down, but obviously they weren't.
They weren't there.
They obviously were not. So I've, I've done all that work and then I think there's also, there's an article that refers to raising money that's really supposed to be from the water department, not the tax base. That needs to be modified. There's a lot of loose ends like that, so.
Well, you saw my bullet list, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the bullet list.
And I agree with the bullet list and then a couple of other things too. So is that not part of this meeting then? That's another meeting?
I, I don't know how we're going to have another meeting between now and then to, to fix that when it's already posted.
Well, we're just going to have to come up with all the amendments.
Yeah.
So I'm going to start writing some of the amendments and then everybody can just agree. We've got to transfer the money back in at the front of the omnibus from the sources that were supposed to be funding it.
Yes.
I'm sorry, but.
Yep.
I, I, I had a hard out at 5:45 for a prior amendment that I couldn't get out of, couldn't re, uh, reassign it. And this came about in the last minute and this is the best I could do to pull this meeting together. So I apologize to everyone here. I thank town council for being on the call. I really appreciate your input, it was very valuable. Ruth, appreciate you coming, your input is also valuable. And I want to thank all the board members for showing up, but I must leave or you may never see me again.
What about motion or adjourn?
A motion to adjourn at 5:52.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald, I appreciate it.
Problem, do what you gotta do.
Good evening, everyone.
Thanks, Bill, for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1776.65]